Second. For discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Excuse me.
Okay, uh, Martins.
Hello.
Okay, uh, since we saw you last, nothing's happened.
Nothing's changed.
I mean, the last time you were here, you said that you were gonna come in and give something to Jenna, and you never did. What you supposed to give Jenna what?
It was supposed to be faxed.
She said she wanted it faxed. I called the attorney and, uh, she directed me to the person to handle the sale, and they said that they were gonna fax, uh, deed, they call it, over to her.
I never received anything. Also, I was in contact with the mortgage attorney treasurer's office today, and they are not in compliance with their payment plan, not been-
I missed last month.
Several months. Actually, they agreed to extend it for them. They tied a discussion back in October, and they never signed anything to extend it. So violation of the-
I talked to them, and they told me that I should just, uh, they get in touch with them the end of, uh, December because I got, we're discuss a payment, some payment with them.
That's not what the information she was conveyed to me at all today.
Okay. That was today that you talked to her?
Yes.
They told me. Okay, um... Cause I got a nice chunk coming here. Uh, do you have, do you have the information that, uh- I, I called that, I called that attorney, and, uh, he said they were gonna fax it over to her. And so it's, but you didn't, you should've checked up on it and everything. Um, but anyway, the attorney's name that I didn't have last week, cause my brother's attorney is Angelo Cornelis. And they didn't do anything yet. They haven't released anything. Uh, I got a letter from them someplace that they're going to sign it all off, but they didn't do it yet. They didn't get in contact with me. So- And I'm expecting everything by the fourteenth or the twentieth of this coming month. And they told me, and I called that, and I did call down there at the, at the county, and they said that I should get back in touch with them at the, it was supposed to be around the fourteenth or the twentieth. I'm supposed to receive a a large check. So, okay, we're ready. Someone's complained. Um...
I, I think what we do is have to either move, do you have any dispute that you are not, um, let's find the right someone's company here. That you have not paid the real estate taxes in full?
No, I haven't paid them in full. I thought you guys told me last, uh, not last meeting, the meeting before, that we were going to, uh, you were gonna extend it to, uh, June or something. I think Marty was the one that kind of pushed that forward or something because-
No, I said that you should make sure you're current if you wanna sell your business to someone else, the license stays with the property.
And, uh, I said I should have by the end of December, the middle of December, and you said, well, we can extend it to June. But I, I said it should be, but anyway, here's, uh- So, the, the second, the process would be that we set up a, uh, a hearing to take away the license, right? We'd have to set a hearing and everything?
Well, it depends. If they don't, they're not disagreeing with anything, so there's really nothing to contest. You can take their fact that they agree that it's true, and you have to, you can decide then what you would like to do with their license.
Well, you said you had, you had somebody interested in buying it. Uh, there's, yeah, there's somebody-
There's a guy coming tonight, seven o'clock.
Well, there's been several people. But I have a chunk coming, uh, by the middle of this coming month.
Perhaps what I recommend, what you did with Sardinas, is that you give them a certain deadline to pay off the taxes by a certain date, and then if they don't, do an amended findings, or excuse me, findings of fact, and just say that if not, then their license has been revoked or something.
Okay, what, and what are you recommending for the date? You mean, uh, by the end of the year, or?
You can pick something, whatever, it's, that's up to you.
Let's pick December twentieth.
He said fourteenth or twentieth? Well, whatever this comes, I think-
December twentieth.
Well, we wouldn't act probably before we meet the first meeting in January anyways. And you know how, honestly, you know how it is with Christmas and New Years. We're gonna have all this, all the lawyer was on vacation, and Wednesdays and Thursdays was the holidays.
Right, so you get a grace period.
So, you're, so, so you're saying by the twentieth, you should, this thing should be all done? Well, they claim they're sent, this should all be sent here by the fourteenth of December. And, uh, I talked to the people down at the county, and they said I should get in touch with you sometime in that period when, when this comes. So, um, give them till the next council meeting, and if they-
Fifteenth?
No, no, not, not the fifteenth, I mean, the-
The first council meeting in January.
Right, first council meeting in January, we give you that, if you don't have it, we're gonna move to take away-
That's gonna be our drop dead deadline.
So, you want me to do it-
Like I said, they're supposed to be coming.
Findings and recommendations, put it on the agenda for the sixteenth, and then you vote on it with the deadline that the taxes have to be paid in full by the next council meeting date in the January, first council meeting in January.
First council meeting in January.
Yes.
Okay, then I will do that.
Okay. So, uh, they, they don't have to appear on the sixteenth today?
Um, no, they'll just send a copy of the findings and recommendations, but I think you do need to formally vote on it before I can actually go ahead and do that.
Okay. So do I have a motion to them?
I'll, I'll move that we-
Findings and recommendations.
Put the findings and recommendations on for the sixteen?
Well, I think what you need to do is make, you've, they've accepted, they admitted they're, they're in violation, and they have not paid their taxes. So you have to decide what you wanna do with their license, if you wanna revoke, suspend, or the non-renewal. That's what you have to do first, and then give them, then based on those conditions, based on the findings of act.
So, what is it?
Well, what's the motion, just?
You're making the motion.
If you wanna move to revoke their license based on the failure.
Okay, I'll make that motion, and I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, you got instructions?
And the reality is, like, it really can't, we won't take action just the first meeting in January.
I'd be on the phone with that lawyer saying, I got a deadline, so. Uh, all these things, item number forty-two and all, we're just gonna hold all these then?
Um, yes, we'll hold them, just so I can do the findings and recommendations based on that.
Okay. Good luck. I'll be upset for you. Okay. Then we have, uh, Dale Criston.
Well, good luck.
What do you think? Uh, now you're gonna be taking over what's it called, O'Stars or something?
O'Reilly's.
O'Reilly's, oh, you're on the other side of the street, okay. That's right. That's right, it says one. Well, he didn't have it very long.
No, it's been up for sale since January, so.
Mr. Chair? Okay, hold on, wait, hold on.
Mr. Criston, you have experience in the business?
Uh, I have no experience owning a tavern, no sir. I do have fourteen years of, uh, running a company management experience.
Okay.
Uh, my wife is, uh, well, the experienced bartender in the family.
So she's gonna be kind of the de facto manager?
She will be.
Okay, and where did you work?
Um, well, I've had a couple different places. Um, one was the Hob Knob, and the other one was Packard, you know, in Cudahy.
Okay, was the Hob Knob down on, I'm thinking Nob Hill, where was the Hob Knob?
Down on Howard.
Okay, not familiar with that one. Um, the, I guess, I mean, the point is that we, we're gonna give a little lecture that we, and then this is probably good for everybody else in here who's looking for a bartending license, is we expect our bars to be partners with the police when there's a problem. Um, if there's an issue, certainly, any kind of violence or anything like that, call the police immediately. And when the police come, we expect your, you or your staff, whoever's there, to be helpful and say, that's him, uh, the license plate is, he was wearing this, not, oh, I didn't see anything, okay? You, there will also be instances when the police send people in not of legal age to drink, to do a sting operation, expect you to card everybody. You familiar with the rules of beverage alcohol service? You know, you can't go to the Pick and Save and buy booze, you know that, okay? Licensed bartender on the premises-
Yes.
At all times. You don't need a license to bartend, but the, but the person working needs to be under their direct supervision. That doesn't mean upstairs. Is the, is the second floor built out yet?
It is, uh, it is also leased out and rented for the year, so.
Okay, so you bought the property, or?
We're buying the entire property, yes.
And, and are you gonna live there too, or are you gonna have a tenant there, okay?
There is a tenant there.
Okay. The, uh, again, our police reports, you know, my bane is, well, there's two things. When someone presents themselves at the hospital or at the police department saying, I was at such and such bar, and something bad happened to me, and I got no assistance from the staff whatsoever, you know, you're supposed to be watching out for your customers, okay? Um, also, when the police show up and everybody's drunk, including the bartender, are you gonna have a beverage alcohol policy for your staff?
There is no drinking if you're working.
When you're bartending, no drinking. I like to hear that, you know? I think that's maybe all I have for now. Oh, one thing, on your application?
Yes, sir.
You know the city's not picking up your garbage?
Yeah, I, uh, I know that.
Okay. Cause you had on your-
We kinda went with AKO's, uh, application. It doesn't look right, but it's a little different now, but we're in the middle of that right now.
Nothing else?
That's all I have.
I, I don't know, sir.
Do I have a recommendation?
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? In favor?
Grand opening, grand opening gate?
Uh, January twenty-fourth.
Oh, okay. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, go, wait, now go sit at the council, you can get up. You go sit at the council tonight, and then, uh, it'll be available after ten o'clock tomorrow?
After ten fifteen.
Well, this would be a-
We need to satisfy all the other-
Yeah, you have all the inspections you have to go through, yeah?
Right, exactly. So those are all set now for January sixth, all the Philly inspection, everything-
Health, plumbing, fire, all of it.
Okay.
So we're all set.
Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Rafael Cantaro? Okay, so you're gonna be the next one to try that location?
Yes.
Wish you luck, you haven't, you, you heard what Oliver Wagle had said?
Yep.
And so you, you live, you know, right in the residential neighborhood there, everybody outside, gotta make sure your neighbors always kept happy?
Oh, yeah.
You know, and when the people go outside to smoke, they gotta keep the noise down?
Yep.
You know, and, and, uh, like you said, with the cars and everything, and so, and, uh, it's gonna be called Rider's Dive?
I was actually wondering if it's possible if I could change that name. You know, that was kinda something that was-
Depends on trying to change it, no.
Something I had to come up with off the top of my head. I'd like to change it into, uh, sorry, I just, I went blank.
What? Okay.
What's that? That's it, Tailgaters. Tailgater sports.
He gets an assist. Okay, uh, okay, you gonna write that down and change everything on here?
Sure, if you wanna approve it without him writing up, formal communication.
I don't, do we need a formal communication?
Write it.
Probably.
Can you just type up a letter?
Sure.
Just type a letter and get it, when you come pick up the license, you can, you can, or, or somewhere along the line, get it to the clerk's office, but, so it doesn't hold things up, you know, we will vote on it as amended uh, on tonight's agenda, so.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Oliver, do you have, and what experience do you have in the bar business?
I've been, I've been a bartender for the past ten and a half, almost eleven years now.
And where, what kind of places have you worked?
Uh, I've worked, uh, Barco Buns, Victoria's, they both own the same place. Uh, I started off in Franklin at, uh, the River Center, Baby Ball.
Bowling Elliot's Bar.
Yep, yep, actually started off as a, as a pin center basically, and I just kinda got into it from there, and been doing it ever since, full-time.
Okay. Anybody have any, have anything to have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, approval as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wanna oppose?
Thank you, good luck. Thank you.
Willie Johnson, Jr. Okay, this is the second time.
Move for denial based on two non-appearancees?
Second.
Now, if he shows up, we can take this back up at recess in case he walks in late, right? Can we do that?
Well, we can just do it before we leave too. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Angela Griffith? Okay. Is that a new application? And where are you gonna be working, or?
Sofia's Restaurant.
Oh, okay.
All right, where, I'm drawing a blank, where's Sofia's?
Seventy first and-
Where's like a-
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Chair?
Oliver, you gonna walk to work?
Yes.
Okay, like, not a long walk, I guess, but.
No, it's about fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yeah, you had, you had a rough high school times, but hopefully that's behind you.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so, uh, have a motion?
I move for approval.
Mr. Chair? And I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Oliver Wagle.
I guess I, I have, I guess I have a concern about this weapons charge.
I had a knife on school property.
Yeah, what kind of knife?
It was just a switch knife.
Just a switch knife?
Pocket knife?
Yeah, it was a pocket knife, just opened.
And you weren't, this wasn't like involved in a fight or a threat or anything?
No, I just had it on my purse.
And how'd they come to find it?
But I was in the bathroom, my purse fell out, so.
And somebody else saw and said?
The teacher was in there.
Said Angela's got a knife.
Well, the teacher was in there.
Teacher was in there.
She saw it, it been fall out in my bag.
And, and then there's also a drug paraphernalia. It says drug paraphernalia and tobacco products. What, what was it?
I had cigarettes and a pipe.
Like a marijuana pipe with resin?
Yeah.
And what'd they do to you for that? What was the, what was the punishment?
I was in the first offenders program.
Okay.
And I did drug therapy and mentoring, tutor mentoring, and I had a personal mentor.
Okay, and so you kept your nose clean, so that's kind of like-
Yes.
Like sponged or whatever?
Yes.
Sponge, it's still on your, it's still on your record?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wanna oppose? Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Sam, Samshire Ronda?
Ronda.
Ronda.
What do you mean, sir?
You should know how to say that. Okay, now, you're gonna be working over here at, uh, West Dallas Liquor?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this is a new application. You haven't worked in the city of West Dallas before?
No.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Oliver Wagle.
Did everybody see the letter?
Yes.
Got, saw it. Um, I did get a phone call from Mr. Boyle, cause the, if you remember, the letter was actually not addressed to us, it was addressed to some bank or something, and, and he did, he did verify that he did indeed write that letter and did make a personal statement regarding Mr. Ronda's honesty and integrity. That being said, um, I have a real problem with this record. Um, two OWIs, and, uh, and the reckless homicide, regardless of what the letter says and all that, um, I'm gonna move for denial based on the record.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? It just- I don't know all the cases, but there is, you know, if you just had the two OWIs, it's, it's bad enough, but, uh...
Those were way back when I never knew that these are serious, huh?
For me?
These were way back and I don't even remember when were they.
One twelve years.
Two, oh, two and eight nine, eight, thinking eight nine, so. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Sorry. Deny.
Denied, okay. Thank you.
Aaron Barts? Bart, you know, Barts?
Barts.
How did I do?
Bartis.
Bartis, I got it right.
Well, after she said it, you got it right.
No, I said it before, she was coming up.
Come on. Okay, this is, uh, another new application. Two places. Ambitious.
I had a license before and I let it lapse.
And, uh, let's see, he's got the one OWI.
Mr. Chair?
And your employers noted the OWI? Oliver Wagle.
Yeah, Aaron, our concern is that you have one OWI.
Correct.
And again, you, so at least on that occasion, you made some bad choices for yourself, and we're gonna be expecting you to make good choices for you and your customers going forward.
I have bartended for the last probably eighteen years. I took like a year off, and then, um, but I met Paul Bootyak, and he asked me to work over for him, so I'm, that's why I'm coming back for another license.
Okay, any further discussion? Do I have a, what, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Mr. Chair? Douglas Ross?
I all do.
Okay, you know why you're here?
Yes, I do.
Uh-
He's his mother.
When I read that, when I read that police report, I thought, what the hell were you thinking? I mean, we want everybody to cooperate. Reading that, it seems like you were making the entire situation worse.
Uh.
I mean, the police were there because they got a call about the noise. They were just coming and doing their job, and you didn't help them at all. Matter of fact, one of the bikers actually seems like in the report that they were helping more than you were. We don't wanna see this. You heard what Oliver Wagle said at the beginning. We tell everybody cooperate a hundred percent with the police, and you weren't doing that. Now, you, you were on a relatively good establishment, we don't get a lot of complaints on you. They do park the motorcycles all the time in that little area, like-
Well, I'm gonna get them off of, so. Put it on up.
You know?
For that, so that I would solve that problem.
Uh, who's gonna put up a sign?
I was gonna see if I could put in where that wrong ways sign is and come and ask you all, so that I could put it there so that nobody parks there anymore.
Okay, well, you can talk to the, uh, public works on that.
All right.
But, uh, but it just, you know, like you said, we just want you to cooperate with the police.
Uh, can I make my statement?
Go ahead.
He has the whole statement.
Says, as been a business owner in the city of West Dallas for over thirteen years, I'd like to first apologize for being called in front of you all for the incident that occurred on Saturday, one November. I have the utmost respect for anyone who is in law enforcement, and I have numerous friends who are in law enforcement, okay? If the West Dallas Police Department feels that I was disrespectful or, uh, resistance to their presence either inside or outside of my building, I would, once again, I wanna apologize for that, okay? They have always been welcome in my establishment, whether in uniform or if they're not in uniform. I, I was happy when they had your patrols walking around and they would come on in. I, I like seeing them around. It cuts out a lot of the problems and keeps the idiots away. I've always taken pride in, in being a member of this community and in my establishment. I, I'm an ex drill sergeant, and I've worked with West Point prep cadets. I was an instructor for over eight years. I ran route at thirty-seven hundred, uh, reserve officer training cadets through, uh, hand grenade and claymore course, and that was in a month's time. I'm ex-eighty-second airborne, and I, 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 you know, I'm military, so I, once again, I apologize because this is how I come across. I come across overbearing at times. And I, and I know that. It's taken me a lot of years to realize that, so, but I will apologize for that. And if you really don't know me, that's, I know how I come across, and I was not trying to be any way at all disrespectful to the police at all, you know, so.
And that's why you're here.
And I just wanted to, you know, make sure that that was clarified, cause I have no problems with the police whatsoever. You know, there's, there's nothing that do come in, and they know me, and I always thought I had a good rapport with them, and I wanna have a good rapport with the West Dallas Police Department. I don't wanna have problems with them. And they, and like I said, they are welcome at any time to come in my establishment. I don't care. I am there. I'm married to my building. And I have a licensed bartender if I am not there. I'm not gonna jeopardize my building or my livelihood for something stupid like not having a licensed bartender there, cause I know better. So that's what I want to kinda say on my behalf, or, and that was about it that I have to say.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? Okay, any motion to place on five?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I was going to, uh, yeah, when that happened, Mr. Ross, uh, made contact, so, so I need to go see him. And he explained the situation, and, and again, was for reasons of, uh, some of the activities that I felt the police, I think that they were doing the, uh, the laws, I think, to follow some of the, uh, calls or, uh, the questions of the Camero, which was parked across the street, you know, which, you know, they were doing some investigations, so it's not really any problem. So, so Mr. Ross, he just, uh, he felt what meant, and nothing ever happened to my establishment. That's why he felt kind of, uh, unstable, you know, so.
Okay, well, the whole, the whole purpose for calling here is to let us, let you know how we really feel about this, and, uh, you satisfied us, so.
Well, I apologize, you know, like I said, that, that it's even came, come to this, you know, like I said, I've always had a good rapport with the city of West Dallas too. The mayor's been in to have my fish fry, gave me a good write-up, which I was happy about, you know? He put it on his Facebook, I was happy, you know, he said he liked it.
Plus, I graduated from Central High in West Dallas, so he's a naughty boy. Just call me, and we'll take care of it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We already voted on this.
All right, thank you.
See you in thirteen years.
Well, I hope not. I'd like to see you sooner, come down, have fish fry.
Lindsay Anne Gialarmo?
Gialarmo?
She called, she won't be able to attend.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
You only put on break, well, how am I supposed to see him? Uh-
I'll use a brighter color next time.
Thinking of the drinking, have we, have we ordered in Hector at all?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what-
Hector has a license?
Bartending license? Is Hector here?
I don't, I didn't see him, is he on the agenda?
No. Uh, the police report is.
I, I did send him a letter to appear with that particular police report, yeah.
So Hector was ordered to be, be here tonight also?
Yes. Yeah. Thank you so much for coming.
Um, did she, did she know why she was gonna be supposed to be here? Did she, did she know why she was gonna be supposed to be here?
She is actually, she told me she's working out of town and she won't be back until Christmas. Um, the letter I sent to her with the police report came back to me, but she gave me her email, so I emailed her all the information, so she is aware of it now.
It came back to you because you had the wrong address?
No, she was having her mail forwarded to a place in Arizona, and that forward expired, and she's someplace else now.
And so, apparently, yeah, I'm thinking, apparently, uh, he's running the bar, you don't know?
She did not say.
Her adre- what address is listed on the application, her license, she'd have to update that.
Right, I explained that to her.
Okay.
She did want paperwork to assign somebody the new agent, um, until we get that paperwork in, I told her that she would still be responsible for whatever happens there.
Okay, we got this other situation here, so. She's, she's apparently, well, she's, technically, she's still running it. You know, but. She's not around, so who is running it?
Well, I guess define running.
Yeah.
Who's hiring?
Who opens and closes the door and pays the bills? You know, uh.
I, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna. Maybe just sit there and let it go till the end of the month? See if there's a licensed bartender there? Yeah.
Uh, I say let, we're just gonna hold these till, uh, till next council meeting.
Yeah.
If you can contact her and say, we. We definitely need Hector in, and we need somebody else, otherwise, we're gonna move to take away her license.
Yeah, I think we need both of them in, right?
Well, she can't come in till.
Till Christmas.
After Christmas. After Christmas will be, so you wanna wait everything until first?
Perhaps you should make a special trip then, since her license is a big deal.
Her license is in jeopardy, I think she needs to know that.
I would say December, I think December sixteenth could be appropriate, or, if not, she can also, I guess, hire an attorney.
Or, or, hire an attorney or, or representative, so you need to get her off, uh, you can talk to her, but I think officially I get a letter off to her too, I guess?
She wouldn't need official representation like an attorney, she couldn't just send like her sister who she wants to become the agent now?
Not until a formal agent, I guess, there's been changes taking place, but she would still need to be, she's still required to come in.
Okay. I will send out a second letter to Hector by certified mail.
Okay.
And I will contact Lindsay.
He, he's the father, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that okay at the committee?
Yes.
December sixteenth, got it.
Thirty nine. Have we heard anything on that?
Still on the tax lien list, I was talking to the county, they, there was a default judgment entered, the court is just awaiting an order for the corporation councils we signed for the foreclosure, they have not made any payments, as I'm aware of.
Can we send somebody in to take a license off the wall then, or what do we do?
Well, what, we have the findings and recommendations on there, they've never been, um, actually, I guess, approved, but what the, um, committee would have to do is approve those tonight, take them to the council, and once they've been voted on and sent to Sardinas, then yes, then their health company would be revoked, and they would no longer be able to operate a bakery business, yeah, anything with food.
Starting when?
Whenever, um, like, whenever Monica sends them the notice, it would probably be like two or three days from now. This is the mo- I guess, also saying this is multiple times where they have not appeared as well, so.
Do you wanna wait till after the holidays?
Well, you hate to do this right before the holidays, but it's, uh.
First January meeting.
You wanna send them a letter saying they have to appear, of course, where are they gonna tell us? And I think that's why, they're not appearing, is it?
They're not appearing, they haven't been appearing, they haven't been paying, but. And it's not a, and to me, it's not about them bringing an extra five hundred dollars in the register, it's prob- people might have holiday orders placed with them, you know? We wanna be the, the Grinches.
So, so you wanna hold this off until after the?
Yeah, let's just hold it until our first January.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my motion, I move it.
Well, we don't have.
I would concur, let's, let's.
Okay. Last, the last hole.
And we send them another appearance letter for the sixteen?
I, I think they just don't care, I think they know what they're gonna lose and they don't care. I don't think.
Well, what does it cost us to send them an appearance letter, type up a letter and send it to them, right?
If you want just by mail or you want a certified letter?
Yeah, just by mail.
Yeah.
If I receive anything different about the foreclosure, I want the committee to know, cause if once, if they, once they lose control of the premises, they can operate anyway, so.
Yeah, and, and you saying that, that'll happen this two years sometime, or?
I'm, I'm hoping that's what they're gonna be doing, this, they all they do is send an order, cause the default judgment was entered on November seventeenth, so, I'm checking.
Okay, and then, uh, then we have, uh, for personal property taxes, I see that you got agreement, one paid in full, uh, new owner on one, the new owner one, does that mean they paid, or?
No, the old owner, it's a new, Marv's Gold Coast Subs, it was Marv, was one person, he was a sole proprietor, the new person is a corporation, I, I think they're related, but there's not really a way I can tie them in, so, they didn't pay, but.
And how about the other two, they're just?
Cold Stone Creamery has not made any contact with the city at all, um, they also have had garbage complaints, and I haven't had anything, um, response from them on that as well, taken through municipal court.
Do we call any of these people?
I send each of them letters.
To come and to appear?
To appear tonight.
So is anybody here from, uh, Cold Stone Creamery or?
Sacred Skin.
Sacred Skin.
Sacred Skin did contact me, but he was not able to give me any yearly payment terms, and he never came in to sign anything.
Okay, so let's.
Pips for our application, who, who paid up?
Uh, the Cat Network, it's on National Avenue, they paid in full, agreement was with, uh, Portilly's Restaurant, and, uh, Jets is, it's being mailed, and then, uh, Sammy's. And there's a new owner at the Gold Coast.
So, you're saying it's really just a different corporate, they just incorporated at Gold Coast Subs?
I think it was like a cousin who took over the business from Marvin, cause I spoke to him on the phone, and he seemed like he was up on what he was doing, so, and I couldn't pin any liability on him.
Okay, so what, what, what we're gonna do is this, this will be send out the letter to these people in and say that if they don't show up, we're gonna revoke their license at the next meeting.
Okay. But we still have to do someone's complaint.
Yes, I know, I know, but we will, we will.
It'll be in jeopardy, gotcha.
Is that agreement with everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, then we have a discussion, uh, late fees for the renewal of license, I don't know if anybody saw this.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Golden Chicken, is that also being?
Number forty-five.
Forty-five is all these.
No, Golden Chicken was a separate.
No, forty-four was all those, forty-five is separate, according to the agenda. Oh, forty-five was all of them, forty-six.
Our numbers are off.
Well. Forty-five, so, communication regarding.
You're not even, what I'm looking at.
Golden Chicken had a misful judgment.
Okay, the gold, I don't have any, I don't have a folder on Golden Chicken. Forty-five is all these.
The building inspection?
It was.
Oh, the electrical inspector, Golden Chicken's here.
He's here.
Yeah, Golden Chicken's here, the one guy.
Did I accidentally clip it together? Yeah.
This is what, electrical outlet permit or something?
Yeah, it was a permit, and I had it done by Roman, so.
There was a, there's a judgment entered, the city of West Alice here in court, he has filed a motion to reopen, but it's not yet reopened, when is the date scheduled, sir?
Um.
Here's the reopen one.
What's the date for?
For seven.
Okay, so I, I guess that I'd recommend that we send this to the end of January, to happen in this case.
When I laid it there, I bet you.
Okay.
You're gonna get reopened, and you're gonna sell it up and?
Right, right. Uh, so we just wanna hold this?
Just hold till the.
End of January.
Yeah.
Do I come back here then, or something, or?
Well, if you pay it all up and all that, and then, no, you wouldn't need to.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, depends how it goes in court.
Okay.
That's it then? I think so.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming down.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now, now we're discussing on the late fees.
I'm allowed to be here according to the city attorney.
No, not a, no, I was saying, yeah.
Yeah, we're all done with.
Yeah, we're just discussing whether, uh, I, I like the recommendation of.
I do too, and, and honestly, since we, I think we've gotten over the hump of this new form to fill out, everybody's had a year to do that, so, that wouldn't be an excuse for, oh, you, you hammer us with this new twelve-page form and a, and a late fee, so.
You know, I just, uh. I, I can't see any reason why, yeah. So, and I, I. Gee, here, I thought they just called me that one year. And they're calling twenty-two people for the license, but it just, uh, twenty-eight. Do you have anything to add on that? Uh, I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, for the late fee, it's just the amount, if you're interested in prescribing what you'd be interested in.
What, uh, what was the?
I know some communities are charging one hundred dollars, if you wanted to charge a one hundred dollar late fee after April thirtieth for all alcohol beverage retail licenses, or if you wanted to differentiate between the liquor and the, and the beer. If you wanted to maybe do a hundred for the liquor, and then fifty for a beer license, uh, fifty for a wine license as a late fee, since their licenses are only a hundred dollar fee to begin with. Or if you just wanted to do a straight one hundred dollar fee for, for all of them.
Yeah, based on the application fee. Uh, I, I.
Or, or whatever.
I said, base it on, base it on the fee, you know, um.
Yeah, that's probably more equitable. A hundred for the full tavern, and then fifty for the beer or wine only.
How about the liquor store? That, that'd be, it'd be a hundred again, huh? Yeah, I, that, that's fine.
Is if they have combination licenses with that?
Yeah, I heard.
Be both fees attached or just the one?
No, like a tavern late fee, with, like a combination would be just a hundred, right?
Yeah, like a liquor store with a combination of the, the class A liquor and a class A beer, then we could just look at a straight one hundred.
Okay.
And then if it would be a, a beer license and a wine license at a restaurant, then it would be fifty per, and then they could be looking at a hundred dollars total.
Fifty per. Okay.
Now, how are they gonna know about this? That there's a late fee?
Yeah. The ordinance with the letter, be prepared.
Yeah, okay. That, that's, that's fair.
Write something on.
There we go.
Okay, uh. Do we miss somebody here?
Elizabeth.
Who was that for?
She's an adult orientated license, when I sent her the appearance letter, I thought she had called me, she did call me, and said she wouldn't be able to make the appearance.
Yeah, cause I didn't think I was gonna be able, cause I have a second job, and my employer told me.
So, I, so I don't have a full.
So I didn't put her on this agenda, she is on the council agenda.
Yeah, cause I'm honestly not gonna be able to come into the next meeting, cause I already got.
So Monica suggested she wait until recess.
Okay.
Well, I don't think any of us have looked at your background, I don't have her police report in front of me.
Yeah, I didn't send out the information.
Uh, like, that, that, that's, that's for?
Super video.
Temptation.
Well, not yet.
Not yet?
The signs.
Not till you approve it tonight.
Signs up, so.
Okay.
And Mr. Phillips is here this evening too, and he, uh, he's on for recess as well.
Okay.
I could make copies of her record.
Record.
Yeah.
If you wanted to take it up at recess.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it up at recess.
Can you stick around like forty, well, maybe till seven thirty, or maybe even late eight o'clock, then we can, then we can finish this up tonight.
Would it be better if I came back at seven thirty?
Well, we don't know for sure what time it is, it's gonna be sometime after seven.
The council meeting starts at seven, and it depends how many things we take, that, we had, how long it takes us to take care of stuff before we come back into committee, and we do have the public works committee for us, so.
Okay.
So.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's fine, I, you know.
Then we can get it out of the way.
Yeah, then we can, cause we're not familiar with your background at all.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll hold it up, so.
That was twenty-eight, right?
We're gonna take it up at a recess.
Yes, if you're looking at the council agenda, yes, mm-hmm, yeah.
That's what it was, twenty-eight? Can someone sign up for a name change on that? Oh, sure, okay. Oh, this was like, this was, already changed it, so, okay, this is all, motion to adjourn?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.